Greg's with us.
We are live on YouTube.
All clear, Councilman Hayes.
All right, let's call this meeting to order, August 21. Any special intentions? Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Yes, just keep everyone in our thoughts and prayers with these storms that are out in the out in the waters and expected to head into the Gulf that we're protected from any harm or damage if those are to come our way. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Deacon Rapier, would you lead us in the invocation?
Let us pray. Compassionate and merciful God, we thank you for giving us another day. Send down your Spirit upon this council. May your protective energy banish all malicious elements, and your healing presence inspire the members of this council to recognize and accept the awesome responsibility that is theirs in this difficult time. Our citizens continue to struggle with the threat of the coronavirus and the economic difficulties that have resulted. Continue to bless all those whose life work is to bring your healing to all those stricken by coronavirus. Finally, as we begin this new school year, we ask you to protect all of our teachers, the employees of our education system, and all of our children as they return to school. May everything done today be for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen. Well done. Thank you. Councilmember Kenny, would you lead us in the pledge? You muted. Unmute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just for everybody's understanding, we will be voting today by roll call again. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised our cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor this morning? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of August 6, 2020. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. We have none. Item 4 is correspondence, reports from the mayor, C E O, or department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Today, for Mayor's comments, we're going to go to three different directors, three different groups, to talk about a few things that are going on in the city of Kenner. So what we have is, first, was something we've been doing, starting since, I think, last council meeting, right after last council meeting, is a citywide cleanup. We are absolutely in every district. We started, I think, in District 2, and we've been through all the districts over the last couple of weeks, since last time we met, and each and every one of you all know that. It's important to make sure that the city's cleaned up. We gave this job to Chad Pittfield. He has done a great job with this. We've seen that happen before with Mr. Pittfield, when he jumps into something, and we figured the best thing to do is for him to oversee these crews, general services, parkways, Public Works, all the crews out there, even the recreation crews, making sure our public right-of-ways are cleaned up. He's done it. You know, the district council people, we filmed PSAs with each and every one of you all. Y'all seen it. Y'all are calling me. You're telling me you're seeing it. The constituents are happy. You see the difference. As I asked in the past, be patient with the debris on the, you know, the leftover limbs, debris on the public right-of-ways, but within a day or so, those are getting picked up. It makes us move a lot quicker by doing it this way. We're going to go with Chad. He's going to do a presentation. I know Chad's ready to do that, and I have two other presentations. We want to talk about COVID with the E O C, Doug Dope and Heather Hilliard, slash also the tropical storms that are out there. Then we will wrap up with Mr. Mike Wetzel, CFO, along with Tom Schreiner, Public Works, to talk about 2030 Plan. But we're going to start first with Chad Pittfield. Chad?
Chad, unmute.
Yeah, got you. Sorry, I was trying to share my screen at the same time. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me this opportunity to highlight what has been going on in the city. You know, here we do have the five field crews that make the city operate each and every day. You know, before we get into the nuts and bolts of what we've been doing is, you know, we should all be very proud of every single employee that we have in these departments. We have some phenomenal field workers that make up the field operations portion of the city. You know, along with the field workers that we currently have, you know, we're really only operating at about 40% of our city workers during the week right now because of COVID. We've had to split our city workers in half. We have some city workers that aren't able to return back to work at this point, so we're really only operating at a 40% level. So, you know, with the mayor's permission, we have joined forces and kind of done a force multiplier with some of our contractors that we have. So it's been a great few weeks so far. We have several weeks still to go with our field workers and our contractors working together to make this happen. So I'm going to Sorry, I was having to hold my spacebar down at the same time. You kind of got a preview of the whole thing quick. So, moving on, just giving you a few little before and after shots. This is along Veterans Boulevard. So I know that Councilman Carroll, I'm not sure if we got to film that yesterday, but I know he was aware of it in his district as well. So this is along the Susan Park Veterans Heights area. That entire stretch from Parish Line in front of the Walmart, Home Depot, all the way to Loyola has been hit every single tree. You can see the pictures on the left, some of the dead limbs kind of hanging there off of those tall palm trees. It looks really nice when you drive down the main corridors that we have. Here's another one on West Esplanade and Councilman Branigan's district. Just cleaning up some of that, you know, those trees, giving you a better look as you're driving down the street. As I said, we've been, you know, we partnered up with some of our contractors. For the tree service, it was RISK Tree Service. We have to, you know, give them the accolades as well. They're out right now on West Esplanade, right around the Pavilion Shopping Mall. They're working on that area right now. They're moving in an easterly direction. So we've been working, our city crews, working along with RISK to make this happen. I mean, look, this is what these guys do for a living. They trim trees and make things look good. So it's been a no-brainer to work with them. Again, working with some of our welcome to Kenner signs, and that's the first thing people see when they come into the city. So we want to make that look as nice and pretty as we can. We're weeding and we're working with another Kenner business that's going to help spruce up some of the flowers and some of that stuff around those welcome signs as well. Here again are the city workers cleaning up some of those neighborhood signs, weeding and sculpting some of those bushes that have been overgrown for a while. IV waste, I think we can all say that this has probably been a game changer in our city. Aside from the normal residential collection that they're doing, we have this amazing boomclaw truck that goes around picking up bulk debris, as well as it's assisting us with the projects that we're doing throughout the city to beautify. The picture on the right is the IV street sweeper that's been running the city on weekends. It hits the north side and the south side, all of our main thoroughfares. It's assisting us, again, while we're working at a 40% capacity. Just want to bring you back real quick, this tree. This was a resident in District 5 had a lightning strike. Within 24 hours, that tree was cut with the assistance of RISK and picked up by IV waste. That's not happening anywhere else. So what we're doing is definitely making a difference, and it's thanks to these contractors, along with our city workers, for making that happen. Streetlights, you know, I should have said this from the get-go. What we're doing right now is beautification, as the mayor said, but we've kind of gotten this, and it's absolutely what we're doing. We're doing everything below ground, at ground level, and above ground. So we're not just, we're not, you know, honing in on just one thing. This was the 3400 block of East Loyola recently, with the assistance of our electrical contractor, W J Blocher. We were able to get the streetlights fixed and repaired in that area. All of that stuff is ongoing as well, aside from just the regular cleanup. There is other projects still ongoing, as you'll see through the rest of my presentation. Again, an apron on a concrete streetway. This is our Public Works Department. This was just yesterday morning. They're out there doing concrete work as well. So that way, you know, look, it's not just tree trimming and grass cutting going on. This is absolutely stuff going on. This was yesterday. So they're doing more today. Our municipal emergency response team, it's a, you know, I added this in the presentation I did a couple of weeks ago, not realizing that we would be having two storms coming right at us pretty soon. So all of those folks in the city, from all of those five departments in the field operations, also participate in this MRT team, the Municipal Emergency Response Team. These are the guys and ladies that go out when tree limbs fall, when different things happen throughout emergencies or natural disasters through our city. Again, it's a great partnership between all of our departments. Look, you know, I'm making this presentation, and I'm the Director of Recreation and overseeing all of this right now, but, look, it can't happen without the assistance of all the directors through the other departments that are making this happen. We're kind of in a very good, unique time where we have some great directors that are all pitching in. In this picture right here that you see with this MRT team, that is three directors that are out there cutting trees and moving trees. So it's, directors don't sit behind a desk. Look, we're making it happen. We're getting it done. I know Ms. Foshee's going to yell at me. I was actually thinking about doing this presentation from a bucket truck, but I figured she would block me. So we're out there with the guys as well, getting the job done, and I think that y'all are seeing that. Again, underground as well, cleaning out sewer, cleaning out the sewers, our wastewater department using their vac truck. Just giving you an idea of some of the things that are happening. Testing the generators. Again, this is something that happens year-round, but, you know, clearly, we're making sure everything's up and working right now in case we need them for next week. Hopefully, we don't need them. We'll knock on wood, cross our fingers and toes that we don't need them, but if we do, they're going to be ready to use. Utilizing B L D in cooperation and conjunction with our city workers, hitting some of those storm drains and cleaning them out, so that way we can make sure when the rain events do happen, that we're getting the water drained and getting it deposited in the best locations that we need. So, again, a great group effort between our city workers and our contractors that we have working here for the city. And then, again, look, this is something that was hanging up for our guys. We have some really rock star employees that are working in the city of Kenner right now, that have shown up to work every single day and given us 110% during this COVID outbreak, along with, you know, having to worry about their families and children and everybody else, but that did not deter. As soon as they come to the city, they're here to do that job, and it's very apparent that they're doing a bang-up job for all of us. So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Councilman Carroll?
Unmute.
Sorry about that, but Mr. Pittfield, as I was saying, thank you for the support for the planning and organization, and particularly all the men and women that worked throughout the city of Kenner to keep our city pristine the way that it should be, the way that we've come to expect. So that being said, all of those, all of those things, I think, are going to help, even during our challenging time right now, just as a not so much of a reminder, I like to get a good feel because I realized when I started this, and I saw on social media, the smoke testing in the, for, we started in one part of the city, I'd like to get a sense after the meeting about smoke testing as it relates to, I'm going to say District 1 for sure, but as it relates to the whole city, also the two storms that possibly could pass our way, the drainage, the drain cleaning, to be able to start working on that. Also get an idea, so I can pass on to my constituents, who obviously has a calling about that with the upcoming storms, to get a feel for that, too. Also with the trimming of the trees from the contractors and the guys that I see out, you know, in South Kenner, we have a number of crate myrtles, which are along River Richard Wilson, along, some along Airline Highway, that we also want to put on that schedule, and also in Lincoln Manor, we have some pine trees that have beautified the community, but they're beginning to look a little raggedy, and we want to be able to ensure that we get on that schedule also to ensure that they are trimmed up. So, you know, that being said, all of those things, I'll have Kelly submit something formally by Monday, but just to put that out there and to get a feel, I would like to get a feel to know the date or the time that we'll be getting to those areas, so I'm able to pass it on to the people within District 1. And again, you know, be safe, guys. Appreciate the support and look forward to seeing you guys around. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, we have a second presentation?
Yeah, but I think Brian and George have a question. I was waiting for that.
George?
I just wanted to thank Chad for getting the job done. The city is looking a lot better today than it looked a couple of weeks ago. Thanks, Chad, for heading it up.
No problem. To support.
And I do think that this is something that, you know, is long overdue. We're getting it done. I appreciate y'all's patience. Councilman Carroll will absolutely get you a time schedule on that. I'll work with, I'll definitely work with Chad getting that for you. But like I said from the beginning, we're going to get to everybody. We're going to get to every district. We're going to get to every right-of-way. It's going to take a little time, but you did request something, Councilman Carroll, so we'll work with you over the next week or two to get something to you on that and let you know what's happening with that. So I appreciate everybody's patience as we work in throughout all the districts. It's a big city. It's a big city. It's a lot of public right-of-ways. It's a lot of green space. We love it. We all love it. Our constituents love it, but it's a big city to get to, and it's been left unaddressed, and I'll take full responsibility for that, but no longer. I think Mike's got a comment, but Mike, to you.
Councilman Segura?
Well, yeah, I just also want to thank Chad and the other departments, probably Works or Sanitation, because this, over the last week or so, I've been out with Chad and his group when they were cutting trees down Roosevelt and 21st Street. Two days ago, I was out with the company that's working with our sewer department, doing the smoke testing in my area between Main Street and Illinois, West Napoleon, West Nattery. Watching how they did their testing and watching the issues that we have to address now because of what that smoke testing does discover, and it gives us a heads up to go get fixed, so that our sewer system doesn't get an abundance of water in it. But Chad, yeah, your guys have been doing great cutting the trees, and it's been something that we definitely are seeing a pretty picture with. Keep it up, and we've got more trees out there, because Dave Mohammed always insists that we put trees on any new project that comes to the city, so we have an ongoing growth of trees going on. Thank you.
Anybody else?
So, so as you've seen in the sort of pictures in the presentation of the citywide cleanup, we're also doing some things, which are cleanup, but like you said, below ground, doing, cleaning our drains, doing things that prepare us for hurricane season. We obviously have two tropical storms that we're all keeping an eye on. We have to make sure those, we're prepared for that. We are prepared. We have been doing some PSAs with Councilman Bastada. I did two of those with him about some things that would be done in District 2, on canal banks, some, you know, a dump canal, pump station in District 3, doing a few things with him, and also doing some things with me, educating the public what you need, what you need to bring with you, and how you can be better prepared. We are absolutely positively prepared for any storm. We always do, you know, preventative maintenance, but we also do some maintenance when storms come around anyway. Our E O C is headed by Doug Dope and Heather Hilliard. I think they do a great job getting these things done. I'd like for Doug to talk about the tropical storms first. Like I've told you all, we'll be in touch with you all through Zoom, either tomorrow or Sunday, the very latest Monday morning, depending on what these storms do. But Doug's going to talk about the storms, and also, I think Doug needs to bring us up to date on COVID-19, where the city of Kenner is, along with the state and the rest of the country. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, we're at the peak of the hurricane season, and obviously, we're seeing some increased activity. Right now, Tropical Depression 14 has formed in the Western Caribbean Sea, and currently, the storm is near Honduras and is predicted to cross over in the Yucatan potential of Sunday and move towards Texas and Louisiana coast, making landfall sometime late Tuesday. If we could bring you up the other slide first, the top slide first, that would be great. The greatest impact, right now, the storm, this particular storm is moving at about 45 miles an hour and is moving forward at about 12 miles per hour. It's expected to become a Category 1 hurricane, and its greatest impact to our area is a potential for heavy rainfall. We can expect to see tropical force winds in our area Monday evening, and the next slide will show you the actual National Weather Service models that are showing the projected path of the storm. So this particular storm will bring us a lot of, a lot of rain and some wind. Further east, the next slide is Tropical Depression 13, which is now Tropical Storm Laura. Laura is moving towards the Caribbean islands, and the track is currently forecast to reach the easternmost Gulf of Mexico off the Florida coast by early next week. The storm currently has 45 mile an hour winds, and it's moving very quickly at 21 miles an hour. It's predicted to make landfall around Alabama and Florida border early Wednesday. It's currently too soon to know of any specific impact from this storm to southeast Louisiana, but we can expect to feel tropical force winds early Tuesday morning from this storm. The next slide shows a projected path of Laura. So as you can see, this one is clearly to our east, and so we won't get as much moisture or rain from this particular event, but we should be seeing some winds come our way from this one. Again, that depends on the path, and we certainly have to be concerned about the full width of the storm and which direction it could go. It could change at the very last minute. We just don't know, so we really need to be prepared. Regardless of the development of either storm, the probability for us, at the very least, is heavy rainfall late this weekend into early next week, and predictions for our area are four to six inches total through next Thursday. So we're going to see quite a bit of rain, and obviously, we'll see some high winds. And right now, as I said, these are 45 mile an hour winds, but we can certainly see some winds greater than that as it approaches. There's also a third tropical wave that's forming off of western Africa, and just to keep things interesting, so that's basically way off there. So we're not having to deal with that right now, but our two storms that are converging on the Gulf were certainly something very interesting, so we're likely to see some interesting storms, interesting weather over the next few days. The Emergency Management Department is closely monitoring new systems and is in communications with our police, fire, and the Public Works Department addressing the preparations, and we've been in contact with our waste provider and are reviewing our debris collection and emergency plans and contracts. We're also taking part in National Weather Service briefings and coordinating with the parish and state officials as necessary. We will continue to update the council and the administration with advisories, and our Public Information Officer will be releasing some additional information as the week, throughout the weekend and into next week, as the weather progresses. Our Public Works, Parkways, Recreation, General Services, and Wastewater Departments, as Chad said, are all out there checking storm drains and taking those emergency measures that we do prior to any storm in order to address anything that may come our way. We've provided our council members and directors with some updated storm planning information earlier this season, and we will activate our incident management team to the extent that it is needed, and we will activate our task force personnel in the field if that becomes necessary. With that, I'll answer any questions about the storm before we go into the COVID information. Okay. As far as COVID, the current numbers being reported by the Governor's Office and Louisiana Department of Health are somewhat encouraging. This week, we've seen several days of relatively low numbers for Jefferson Parish as a whole. Monday, we saw 26. Tuesday, we saw 50. Wednesday, we saw 40, and Thursday, 59. So as of this week, there's been a cumulative total of 15,964 cases for Jefferson Parish and 534 deaths. That's the cumulative total. In Kenner, there's been a total of 2,761 cases so far. With these lower numbers, we're starting to see some glimmer of light at the end of the tunnel, but it's still very early. It's too early to relax what we've been doing. Mayor Zahn and his staff and Emergency Management Department, we continually assess our posture within the department, within the city, to determine whether or not our department needs to make any adjustments to what we're doing. We are currently following and complying with all the guidance provided by the various entities, the White House, Department of Homeland Security Critical Infrastructure Guidelines, Public Health Guidelines from the state of Louisiana, as well as the CDC, Fire Marshal Guidelines, and executive orders issued by the governor and the mayor. We are continuing to operate with minimal disruption to our essential services. Like all other large public entities, we have encountered some limited COVID activity amongst our ranks, but our first responders, our police and fire departments, are adequately staffed and remain capable and committed to addressing all of our public safety needs. Our field services have been reorganized and are handling infrastructure and increasing beautification activities throughout the city. Our code enforcement department continues to address building codes, safety issues, and building permits. Our court system is accessible and is handling judicial matters. And on the municipal side of the house, remote operations for all of our departments is working quite well. Our personnel are currently processing between 200 and 250 calls per day on our, at our remote call center. And so we continue to work towards reopening our facilities, ensuring that when it is appropriate, they are, and safe, for visitors and employees alike to return, we will do so. We're refining our office reoccupation plans. We've adjusted shifts and work schedules. We've repurposed our facilities and retasked some personnel. We've enhanced our public information deliveries, and we've adopted alternate programs. Our Citizen Services and Food Bank and Community Services, Community Development Departments have done a stellar job in providing uninterrupted food for our vulnerable population, our disabled and elderly, and also addressing housing needs of our community. And working with Tulane University and Ashner Hospital, we've implemented some activities that will address the concerns of our employees and communities and address some of our public health issues. These measures seem to be contributing to the slow of cases of COVID in our community, and our community on a whole has acknowledged the recommendations of health professionals and is undertaking reasonable precautions by masking up and practicing appropriate distancing in public, and we encourage continuation of this behavior. Our current occupation, operational model has allowed us to remain flexible, and we can pivot in the event there is a need to address any concern in any area of operation. Coronavirus remains a novel virus without a vaccine. Health experts suggest that the measures we are taking within the municipality will contribute to slowing of the spread of this disease, and we do recommend the continuing what we're doing. Ms. Hilliard has some additional information to share on coronavirus activity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. At this time, I just wanted to share that at the press conference yesterday held by the governor, he noted that the state looked at some recent test results, and out of 2,100 people tested, 60% of the positive cases were asymptomatic. sixty percent of the positive cases were asymptomatic. This is the issue we're facing, it's very challenging. It contributes to what the CDC terms uncontrolled community transmission. We're seeing this right here in our area. Tulane is the largest private employer in the region, it's tested students and staffs. Through Wednesday of this week, they identified and quarantined seventy cases, most of which were asymptomatic. UN Airship, UNO shared as of yesterday, they had quarantined twenty in their first week of class. Schools in the area are having increased problems, even though kids have not even been attending for two weeks. The Archdiocese of New Orleans K through twelve schools on Wednesday sent home students and staff to quarantine. Jefferson Parish schools have had delays or sent home staff and students as well, including counter-discovery that has closed for two weeks or more for student quarantine. More schools have children and or staff being sent home, though the data is not released yet. We expect that to be coming today or even on Monday about more cases with symptomatic and asymptomatic students and staff. Here in the city of Kenner, numbers looking at state data, they've continued to increase, but we're starting to see, as Mr. Dot said, some slowing of the growth after the mayor's mask order. Um, this is shared with a grain of salt as we caution the state's reduced testing options. They have fewer number of test kits available, some cases it's due to the reagent shortages that are in those test kits or in some places it's limited to only symptomatic people. Um, so basic, basic math means fewer tests with the same infection rate, which we're seeing, means fewer positives will be identified. So we still have challenges with the numbers we're seeing. Um, the CDC has recommended that all states and localities start testing wastewater for early indicators of COVID cases. We have been doing that with Tulane University for for several weeks, um actually several months. Um, and they are seeing a correlation, they're doing um not only our test data, but New Orleans as well. Um, and and we're seeing some interesting results that they're getting ready to uh prepare. The fire department continues uh to visit business and restaurants on a daily basis to enforce the governor's capacity restrictions um from his proclamation one oh one, though that's going to be updated, he said, next week um and re- and released with some updates. Social distancing and not having groups gathered is really important, especially indoors, as that's scientifically shown um and shared by the CDC and the White House Task Force as a good way to reduce positive cases. Both masking up and the social distancing continues to be important. The mask orders actually help the growth rate here in the city um stop rising by twenty percent. So we are starting to see a flattening, um but we still don't have any plateaus or flattening in any of the districts in any of this areas of the city. For general public health awareness, since we also do have those sorts of things, the flu season is coming, it starts October first. We expect um the state to start monitoring that as well, so the same initiatives that have applied, um washing hands, um, you know, going to the doctor if you have influenza-like uh symptoms and getting your flu shot. So we're continuing to monitor the CDC and the White House Task Force for that information too, and we'll continue to share with leadership as more information becomes available. Thank you.
You have any questions? Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, not so much of a question, just to be able to express, you know, some of my concerns as relates to specifically uh the COVID nineteen that uh, you know, listen, I understand the challenges that my family and everyone else's family on the council in the city are going through. I uh, I can appreciate and 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 do appreciate the governor's position on this. And I believe he's taking safety as a first precaution. I, that's just my personal opinion, which in turn, I think our administration has followed suit the same way. So obviously, some people are gonna get a little frustrated with us, but that's just, that's just our job, we gotta take that. But I'd much rather you get frustrated with me at the end of the day and your loved ones are here after that, because you're gonna get over being upset with me, but you can't get over being affected by the loss of a loved one. And all these precautions that we're doing with our buildings, our employees and all of this, it is, it is, it is challenging, it is, it is, it is just dreadful. But I am glad that we are taking this posture, I look forward to the days when we can get back. But I believe the governor, the mayor, the administration, the guys that work are doing, are doing what they believe are best for our population, so I only ask that we all do a little bit just to support along with ourselves. Uh, and in our reflection as elected official carries a lot of weight. You know, we had a meeting, we talked about that, and I believe that's true. You know, to be able to be positive, to be compassionate and understand people's challenges is one thing. But at the end of the day, as we would do with our own family, we're gonna do what's best for our families. Without a doubt, that's gonna always happen. And you know, the community being in our extended family, I believe we are obligated to do the same thing. So, you know, thank you a lot, Holly, Doug, and keeping us up with the numbers, letting us know what the 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 numbers are, how it's affecting the the, not only the country, but particularly the state of Louisiana and Jefferson and the surrounding area. So, you know, please keep up the good work, we appreciate it, man. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. May I, does that conclude your remarks?
I think Councilman Wilmot has a comment.
I don't see him on my screen right now.
Tom. Oh, oh, thank, thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, Mr. President, um, can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I just wanted to ditto, uh, Councilman Carroll articulated very well and 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 I agree with his statements and comments and um, again, it's 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 something that it might be uh a necessary thing that a lot of people may not understand, but it's important that it be carried out in a, in a safe fashion. So uh, I'd like to thank the administration, how they handled this and done a good job and uh it's been difficult. It really has been on a lot of folks, a lot of families and uh the illnesses and 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 um, you know, we gotta try and mitigate that as much as possible and I think the administration's done a good job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, so one more thing, Councilman Hayes, if you bear with us, cause um first of all, I wanna thank Doug and Heather for that presentation, also thank Councilman Carroll, Councilman Wilmot for their support and that, along with the rest of the council, for supporting what we're doing and how we're doing this. Look, nothing's broken, we don't need to fix anything, I think we got everything moving in the direction that we need to, to keep our city services going. With that said, um, there were some comments in the past, there were some questions last council meeting, I promised a report on the twenty thirty plan um would be given at this council meeting. I have not seen this yet, I've heard about it, I think it's what we need to express to people. You know, where we've been with twenty thirty, where we're at right now, where we're going with twenty thirty. Uh, I've made this comment numerous times, you either like it or you hate it. I don't know what, what everyone feels about it, I don't have a feeling on it, I have a feeling that we need to see, you know, complete the projects that were promised to the public. But I think it's important for everyone to know where the money is and where the money has gone and where the money's going. Uh, it's very important for us all to listen to this, I know these mayor comments are getting a little long today, I apologize, but it's, we need to get this information out, Council President, so I appreciate your cooperation along with the rest of the council, bearing with us as we're getting all these important comments out today. So if you could bear with us for about another ten, fifteen minutes maybe with uh Mike Wetzel and also Tom Schreiner, they will go through step by step what's going on with twenty thirty. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so back in two thousand and thirteen, the city issued forty-two million dollars worth of sales tax-backed bonds. Of that forty-two million dollars, fourteen million dollars was used to pay off the two thousand and three sales tax bonds. The remaining twenty-eight million dollars is what created what we know as uh the twenty thirty plan, which is simply nothing more than the two thousand and thirteen capital budget. So far to date, and just as a disclaimer, these are unaudited numbers. So far to date, nineteen point three million dollars has been spent and or encumbered on projects. Of that nineteen point three million dollars, five million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars was paid to consultants as consulting fees. The rest was encumbered and or uh used to finish projects, leaving nine and a half million dollars in an interest-bearing checking account. That is the monetary part of the twenty thirty plan, I think Mr. Schreiner has a presentation to explain the projects that have been completed, planned and or in progress.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, bear with me while I give you a brief description of the project, of the projects in the twenty thirty plan. First one is the Duncan Canal West Esplanade project, this project is presently under construction, many of y'all probably have seen the progress, uh, project is mainly to replace the outdated bridges that you see out there, they are one of them's already been removed, it's a timber pile-supported bridge and what we're replacing it with is concrete box culverts. Um, and also a small portion of the West Esplanade Canal will be enclosed, should make a nice uh arrangement over there, but we'll be able to do some pedestrian improvements and eventually come back with some landscaping and art installation. Uh, second one is the Williams Boulevard, which is from West Metairie to I-ten. This project is presently being designed, this is a corridor project that includes streetscaping along with a complete streets policy. This project essentially eliminates the ad grade median and replaces it with a mi- with a raised median. Additional turning movements will be added at veterans. This policy also includes additional trees and shrubs, decorative lighting will also be incorporated, bike lanes and pedestrian crosswalks and improved bus stops are added features. Next one is the Earl Anger Median Improvements Project, this project is complete. This uh project includes a new pedestrian walk, which extends from Vintage to the lake. It also includes landscaping and pedestrian crosswalks. The next one is the Power Boulevard Beautification Project. This project is under design, this project will extend from West Esplanade to Vintage. It will tie into the completed Earl Anger Median Project and will provide a continuous pedestrian path from West Esplanade to the lake. A wider concrete walk with enhanced lighting will be incorporated into the median. Artwork has already been added to the median, pedestrian cro- crosswalks will be included along with a new separate pedestrian bridge over the Vintage Canal. Next project is the Airline and Williams Intersection Improvements Project. This project is complete, project includes new traffic signals, landscaping, pedestrian crosswalks and a new sign welcoming motorists to Rivertown. The next one is the Williams Vintage and Williams Vintage Intersection Improvements, project is complete. Project includes extension of the concrete box culvert on the west side of Williams. This allows for a new pedestrian walk and an improved U-turn movement for motorists. Landscaping is also a part of the project. Next one is the Kenner City Park Wood Lake Playground and Wentwood Playground Improvements. This project is complete, this project includes landscaping, lighting and irrigation enhancements, extension of the walking path and expanded parody patio area at the pavilion. This project also includes a skateboard park at Wentwood and ball field enhancements at Wood Lake. Okay, the next one is the Williams Boulevard I-ten to Vid- I-ten to Vintage. The project is presently in design, final design phase, is presently on hold. Currently, there are no available outside funding for this project. Although the project is in final design, additional design effort is needed to complete the project. Without outside funding, the city would be responsible for a hundred percent of the construction cost. However, additional funding sources will be pursued. This car to project includes streetscaping, project also includes additional trees and shrubs. Decorative lighting will also be incorporated, bike lanes and pedestrian crosswalks and improved bus stops will also be included. The next one is the Veterans Boulevard Enhancement, Williams to Roosevelt. This project is in it, is in the final design phase, but is presently on hold. As was stated previously, there is no available outside funding. Additional funding sources for this project will also be pursued. This project includes additional landscaping and crosswalks along veterans. Loyola Drive Median Improvements, this project includes median improvements from veterans to vintage. Additional artwork, lighting and utilities have already been added. Additional improvements are not being considered because of the interchange work and because of the lack of outside funding. This is a, this is the summary of projects, if there are any questions or you can wait, I know Ms. Foshee is gonna provide some additional information on.
Mr. Chairman, President, may I? Councilman Hayes, may I?
Yes.
So I think one of the points that that we all say it, but it need, it really needs to sink in, this money can be spent on capital projects, only on capital projects or to repay the bonds themselves. But the money is not limited to capital projects that were in the twenty thirty conceptual plan. For example, the very first project um completed with the twenty thirty funds was a garden at City Hall. One of additional ones that was done before we arrived and is fabulous is the Wentwood Skate Park. So as long as it's being used for the intended purpose, which is the two thousand and thirteen capital budget, it can be spent basically on any capital purpose. So as you will see, there were some things put in there that were not in the original conceptual plan and there are some things for which we will not have funding. Even with the original bonds, there was never enough funding to do all of these projects without having some outside supplementation. So what you see us doing, for example, with the um the improvements on Williams um, south of veterans is, that is a DOTD project. So we are working with DOTD, they have federal highway funds and we are putting funds in as well. Any of these projects that we can use these funds for joint venturing to get them completed, we will, but we can't, obviously can't see into the future. When the plan was being discussed about the median improvements on Loyola between veterans and the lake, no one was really thinking that we were going to have an interchange at that location, that we're gonna knock down a fire station and then we're gonna have a whole bunch of traffic coming out. So the idea of what we're doing in the median there by necessity has to change. So the plan evolves or the the implementation of the plan evolves, but I think the most important thing to remember is it has to go to capital projects or it has to go back to the um, to the bond itself. Um, the, hold on one second. Our debt service on this particular bond this year, uh, it varies by year, because you were told by Mr. Wetzel that these are sales tax bonds. Our debt service on the bond, principal and interest is three million one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So that's the amount that we're paying to the bondholders who provided us with their money upfront to be able to use for the project. Um, because it's sales tax bonds, ours, as everyone knows, our sales taxes are not our most stable funding source at this time. So it is probably, uh, we are, as we consider how to maintain the best fiscal course, is not to leap out and commit to any great um, additional capital projects or take on any that have not been started until we know that we will actually have sufficient sales tax revenues to meet the bond service debt on this particular bond. So that is basically, I think, all I have, if anybody has any questions for any of the folks who um, Mike Wetzel or Tom Schreiner or me about these twenty thirty status funding.
Can I say something real quick? Um, just, just also uh something we left out is that we are currently in the process of refinancing these uh twenty thirty bonds. So we are gonna get a lower interest rate, probably saving the city roughly three million dollars within the next two years.
Thank you. Councilman Carroll, will you hand it up?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to thank all the directors and Ms. Foshee uh for their presentation and it's uh, it's good to know that we are evolving uh as we move forward. It's great to s- to get the update on these projects, the status of them, to tell us where we are. Obviously, the financial aspect to all of the citizens is number one, but as we address that, to be able to i- i- in my personal opinion, to revisit this, to look at it, and as she said, for capital projects, and that is the part that that I really wanna be part of that conversation, to be able to look at future capital projects, particularly the ones we've been talking about as it relates to drainage, all of those things, without going into details. So this is a re- this is kinda like a revised update, get an opportunity to look at it again and uh without going into to prior discussions that, to really look at this and to be able to do some things that will support the city from drainage and everything else that uh that we are dealing with right now. And I look forward to those conversations and to be part of those conversations and projects, capital projects. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments, remarks, questions? Here are none. We have a motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKinney, to approve the consent agenda. Again, council members, we're going to have a roll call vote.
Here's the council president. That was just item four of the consent agenda, I think the clerk.
I think the clerk needs to go through the balance of it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. There are no other items on the consent agenda, so that will conclude your consent agenda.
Thank you. Again, uh, motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKinney, to approve. Council members, let's vote by roll call.
Councilman Brennan?
Unmuted.
Councilman Brennan?
Unmuted, Councilman Brennan.
I am, it was, it was frozen, sorry. Four.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brown again?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have either non-public hearings for final passage. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,743, an ordinance amending Chapter 15 Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 3 Inspection of Motor Vehicles.
We have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brennan, to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I've received a request from Councilmember Wilmot to amend the ordinance. If I could, please read the amendment into the record, please. In section 15 dash 36, requirements for issuance of certificate. To change the current subpart 21 concerning insurance to subpart 22, and to insert a new subpart 21 to read as follows. Twenty-one, all motor vehicle headlights, auxiliary or fog lamps, rear lamps, signal lamps or reflectors or parts of any foregoing shall comply with the requirements of L.A.R.S. 32 colon 334. Number 22, no motor vehicle inspection tag shall be issued to any person or any motor vehicle until written proof has been shown to the motor vehicle inspection office of the owner's compliance with the Louisiana Compulsory Motor Vehicle Liability Security Act, L.S.A.R.S. 33 dash 861, in the form of one of the following. A, an identification card issued by an insurer and to its insured, which shall contain the following information. Number one, the name and address of the insurance company. Number two, the insurance policy number. Number three, a description of the motor vehicle insured under the policy. And number four, the effective date and the expiration date of the policy. B, a motor vehicle liability insurance policy, a duplicate original therefore. Item C is a motor vehicle liability insurance policy binder or a duplicate original thereof. Item D is a duplicate original of a motor vehicle liability bond, which complies with the definition of R.S. 32 colon 861B. E is a certificate of the state of treasurer stating that cash and securities have been deposited with state treasurer as provided under the provisions of R.S. 32 colon 861C. Item F is a certificate of self-insurance issued by the secretary under the provisions of R.S. 32 colon 1042, qualifying the owner of the vehicle as a self-insurer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome. That amendment is at the request of Councilmember Wilmot.
Do we have a second on this? On the amendment?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who said that? You had three hands up.
Councilman Carroll.
Seconded by Councilwoman Carroll. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Councilman Wilmot?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to, to, to give some, some indication that the, what, what the actual amendment is. It helps to ensure that the lights on vehicles when they're being inspected are in accordance with state law. That's the 32 colon 334. That legislation's dealing with lights on vehicles that they be inspected. And it gives, gives us the authority to do so. And that's in accordance with state law that was passed in 2011. I was the actual author of the legislation, so it's statewide. So, uh, I hope for your support on the amendment. Thank you.
Again, council members, we're going to vote by roll call on the amendment. Madam Clerk?
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yay.
Brown again?
Yay.
And Brennan?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero on the amendment. Mr. Chairman, I've also received a request for another amendment at the request of Councilmember McKinney. If I could, read the amendment into the record for you. An amendment to amend section 15 dash 45, subpart B, to insert the phrase, "or training provided by the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement, or is an ASE certified mechanic." Those words would be inserted after the word safety, so that subpart B reads as follows. No person shall be approved as a motor vehicle inspector that has not completed motor vehicle inspection training, approved by the Louisiana Department of Public Safety, or training provided by the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement, or is an ASE certified mechanic. Evidence of completion shall be submitted to the Department of Inspection and Code Enforcement. Any inspector that has been unlicensed for a year or more must be retrained by inspecting any, before inspecting any vehicle.
Again, we have a motion by Councilmember McKinney. Do I have a second on this from somebody? Councilman Brennan, seconds? Is there any discussion on this amendment?
Councilman.
Gregory's got his hand up.
I'm sorry?
Gregory has his hand up.
I'm sorry, Councilman Gregory.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. President. And I thank you, Councilwoman McKinney. I apologize for not getting back if we kind of missed one another. Just had one question that just relates. I understand, uh, we have a plethora of changes that are going to be going through possibly with our, you know, brake tag station and that, and the employees. So this particular amendment, does it? Is it for new employees coming in, or are the people who are presently working, grandfathered in, and will not have to be, uh, going through this, this, this new process? And, you know, just, obviously for a mechanic, you have to have those skillset. But for the individuals who are strictly working with the brake tags and stuff, does this apply to them to, to be able to get all these certifications for the present employees? Great. That's, I, I just think that's fair for people who've been working there 10, 15, 20 years, uh, time. Go, go ahead, you have something to say?
Ms. Foshee?
They already have it. That's what the purpose of the amendment is, is to provide the type of training that they already have. Everyone there receives training. Mr. Kenny provides that training. At the point at which we thought directors were going to have to do the brake tags, he was preparing to give us the training. So there are multiple ways, ACSE or ASE, whatever, certified. But in addition, there is the training provided by Mr. Kenny. So everyone who is currently at the brake tag station already has that training.
Great. And, and that's, that's fantastic to hear. I, I just go back, a lot of my buddies and friends who worked, uh, driving vehicles when they had to get the ACL certification of that, uh, there are some challenges for them from, uh, their, their age, their ability to be on the computer. Those type things, I don't want, I don't want our employees to be, uh, I want them to get better, but I don't want them to be, put something on them where it, it becomes maybe a challenge for them. So that's great to hear that they have it, and they're going to be good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Carroll, those requirements for these satellite, uh, locations is the, all of our, as Ms. Foshee said, all of our employees are trained. These are how the outside satellite locations can get qualified people to do. You can either do the state training, you can do the training through the, uh, Department of Code, or you can be an, assuming this passes, or you could be an ASE certified mechanic.
Thank you. And they most definitely have to have it. We want them to get it, for sure. So thank you a lot. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Kenny, do you have a comment?
Oh, no, I was just going to reiterate what, um, thank you, Mr. President, what Mr. Rapier said.
All right. After discussion, let's vote.
I believe Councilman Brennan had a question or?
I'm good. Thank you. It's all clarified. Thank you.
Let's take a roll call vote on the amendment. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Wilmot?
Unmuted.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brown again?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Chairman, before we move on to, um, the vote for approval on the item as amended, I have received an email from a gentleman, a Kenner resident. If I could ask the Assistant Madam Clerk to start the timer, I will read this document into the record. Not sure if I'm going to have enough time to read it in within the three minutes. This has also been forwarded to all of the council members. This is from Mr. Bob Bales at 4200 Beaujolais Drive. The proposed ordinance will enable privatization of brake tag inspections, and it's consistent with comments by Mayor Zahn several meetings ago about evaluating the option for the city to privatize brake tag inspections. As has been done in other municipalities, satellite stations will be regulated by Kenner Code Enforcement and will keep half fees collected and remit the other half to the city. The ordinance includes a revenue shift to the KPD. This would seem a nice addition for one-stop service for people needing other maintenance services, a good pilot program, and may result in more convenience for residents of the city. Number one, how will code enforcement monitor to know inspections are being done correctly? Although the code calls for the same thorough inspection as done at the city station and task code enforcement with responsibility, how will code enforcement verify that thorough safety checks are being, or actually being done? Number two, how has the city evaluated the effectiveness of how many vehicles are inspected? Budget documents show actual brake tag fees declining, suggesting fewer inspections. Fiscal year 2015, 2016, the actual numbers are 383,453. Fiscal year 2016, 2017, actual, the numbers is 461,590. Fiscal year 2017, 2018, the actual is 578,155. Fiscal year 2018, 2019 estimated, the numbers are 267,158. Fiscal year 2019, 2020, budget 2071, 165, 56.9% reduction. Last year's budget refers to 1,520 brake tags being issued, suggesting that most the 30, 3,040 vehicles would go through the brake tag check. Kenner has 67,000 people, and I believe I've seen the figure, 34,000 households. The municipal code calls for all cars registered in Kenner to go through the brake tag inspection. What percentages are being checked? What is considered an acceptable percentage? And if the actual rage is low, what code enforcement options are available to the city? Does the city anticipate that satellite stations will have a positive impact on the number of vehicles inspected? KPD is part of enforcement. However, for example, could code enforcement staff get current data from the Louisiana Office of Motor Vehicles on vehicles registered in Kenner and cross-check against brake tags? Contact owners on inspections that are late? Number three, when and under what conditions will the Kenner Brake Tag Station reopen? The Brake Tag Station performs a valuable public service by helping make sure vehicles on the streets meet minimum safety standards and that vehicles are insured. There's one more paragraph where we are out of time.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. Just, it's just two sentences. Go ahead and finish it up.
Okay. Presumably, the pandemic-driven shutdown has so far cost the city $100,000 to $125,000 in brake tag revenue. The salaries cost falling on other general fund revenue sources. Is that correct? While their sympathy and understanding for human resource-related questions, auto-related businesses have been considered critical throughout the pandemic. With respect for the safety, creativity, and ingenuity of the Kenner workforce, under what safe job practices and conditions can the Kenner Brake Tag Station safely reopen? All council members have received this email. Just a matter of clarification. The certification that goes out with our agenda states that all emails are to be emailed to the clerk by 3:30 the day before the council meeting. The Assistant Clerk received this shortly, and then you guys, um, received it from us as we received it this morning. We will be back to the motion as amended. If we could entertain a vote for approval as amended.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Brown has his hand up.
Sorry, Adam. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't take but a second. It just sounds to me like a, a very good common sense piece of legislation, which I think we need, and I hope the council will support it. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments before we take the vote? Roll call vote? I'm sorry, Councilman McKinney?
We're voting on the amendment, correct? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I got the vote.
On the ordinance, on the ordinance as amended.
Okay.
This is the final vote.
Yeah, we've already voted on the two amendments.
Okay. Council President?
Yes, Mayor?
Would y'all like a brief, because I mean, there was a lot of comments from Mr. Bob Bales, and maybe some questions or comments. Would y'all like a presentation on Ms. Molly McGinnis with code enforcement, also James Mohammed, since he's back with us, on just to kind of, it might answer some of those comments, maybe some, I don't know, questions, accusations that we just heard. And might, other people might have the same types of issues.
Ms. Foshee, do you have this in print form? We read it so fast.
I do not have it in print form. It was sent by email. I can probably pull it up. But I, Molly is prepared to talk about this and answer any questions, I think. So I think.
It would be helpful just for the general public to hear an overall view of why we're doing this. And you look, it started with a safe, just from my aspect. It, it started with a safety issue, absolutely positively. I think Councilman Carroll said it earlier. I'd rather you be upset with me now than be upset with me because you lose some family member. So this is all about safety, getting inside the cars, which led to us understanding that we're losing money by doing this. So a lot of things have led to it. So if you, if you could yield some time to Molly McGinnis, I think that'd be helpful.
Councilman Carroll, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I, I just want to, to back up the mayor. I think it'd be great for, uh, Ms. McGinnis to give us a presentation and to be able to give Mr. Bob some of his concerns and the part that is not answered, for him to come back to us and say, well, you answered one, two, and three, but what about four and five? And I think that'd give us a round.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi, yes, sir. Thank you. Um, there's just a little bit of background. The city of Kenner passed the ordinance, um, for motor vehicle inspections in 1958. It wasn't until two years later that the state passed the requirement. That's why you have a couple of municipalities that don't have the requirement. Kenner, West Wego, and New Orleans. They started out at 50 cents. Since then, uh, the city has provided the service. Obviously, the state's pretty big, and they've always gone with satellite stations. I think there were a few state stations, but they went away from that. We've prepared, um, with the employees that we have, those guys are very important to us. They, we've had them a long time. Most of them have been in code for a while. We can repurpose them if we don't need them to help administer the satellite stations. We do have plans to make spot checks and inspections of the satellite stations very frequently, especially in the beginning. We will send people through to, to test and make sure that they're following all the requirements that, that they should be. And, um, the same people that have been running brake tag will be continuing running brake tag. So I think that we'll see a positive, um, result from that because, uh, Mr. Kenny Anderson has very high standards, and, um, all of his guys are top-notch. So I, I really think that this is going to be great. He's worked out an online training program, uh, since the state certification classes are not running right now. And, um, we'll be ready to go as soon as the legislation is, uh, effective after it advertises. Yes, sir.
Ms. McGinnis, thanks again for your presentation. We, we talked a little about, about this yesterday. If you can just go into details about how many satellites are we talking about, the locations as, as it relates to within the state of Kenner and your department, uh, ability to give us, us the citizens that information, so we all knew exactly where they are. If you could just talk about that a little bit, please.
Right. I'm sure we'll start out, um, with probably a few, a few more than, um, we know we want one at least in the north, south, east, and west. Thus far, I've had about 20 locations inquire with very high. Thus far, I've had about twenty locations inquire with very high interest in becoming a satellite station. I think that may be too many, but a lot of them may not qualify once we go out to inspect, and they don't have enough parking, or, you know, they have to have restrooms for the public, they have to have their phone number on the internet. There are some restrictions, and if they can't meet those, you know, we'll weed those out, because we want people going to quality places, but we also think that this is a good economic impact, because other people, they can get extra services maybe from where the satellite station where they go. I'm sorry, what was the rest of that? Councilman Carroll?
I'm just saying, thank you for that. And obviously, this is new. This is something that will have to be molded as we move forward, but to be able to get this information, once they qualify as.
Oh, yeah.
Get that information, name.
The stations will be, will be, we'll be putting it on the webpage. I'm sure there will be social media posts and press releases. There'll be signs around the city, much like the, the same locations for the Romelli cans, where we'll get the locations, and we'll make sure everyone has a copy of it, and they will all display a sign that, that shows them as an authorized Kenner inspection station.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister President.
Councilmember McKenney?
Um, yes. Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank the administration, and I helped work on this with the legal department. I reviewed it and worked closely with the administration on it. I think it's a really good move in the right direction to, you know, privatize, open up more stations to give the residents the ability to go to different places and that are closer to their house, and then aren't as restrictive, because it, it can be open on more hours, you know, available on weekends as well as longer hours than it was before. But I do have a quick question, and I want, I guess, a clarifying question. I know the answer already, but I just want to make sure that the public understands that they'll no longer, will, will the ability to get a, a break tag from the break tag station still, will the average citizen be able to still get one from the break tag station? Or will it all go transition to the satellite locations? I think that's an important thing that we need to make clear, as well as, I think you have a, I think it's important, and I, I believe you have a good change management, transition management to move from the location, from the current location to the future location. And I think you touched on that a little bit, but I just want, if you could elaborate on that, specifically stating, what's the planned date of that transition? Thank you, Miss McGinnis.
The planned date? I, I don't, I would have to look at a calendar. I don't have one next to me, but it's seventeen days after the, the legislation advertises. So the beginning of September sometime. I'm sure we'll be sending out notifications. And whether they will be, I, I doubt seriously they will be doing any break tag inspections at the station. Number one, we don't know what stage we're going to be in, when, and when we can even bring people back to that building. Those offices are incredibly small. There's no way to social distance. One person in a room is really all we can fit. So we, we just can't even put staff there. So if they, if we use the break tag station, I seriously don't think that we're going to use it. We're going to use it for taxi cabs, for fleet stuff, for the other things that we do, but I really do not think we'll be doing any public motor vehicle inspections there. We'll leave that to the satellite stations.
Okay. And then, so for the taxi cabs and for the private businesses, they can, or they're still going to be able to go, or right now, what are they doing since they can't go to the break tag station as well?
Well, they, they all, they're doing what they've always done, contacting Mister Kenny and making an appointment with him, and he has some guys that he can use in the field, and they're coordinated that way. So it's still, it's, it'll actually be handled the same way it's being handled now.
Okay. So they don't go to the station normally either?
They do, but they make an appointment. So it's the same, it's, yeah, and it doesn't have to be there, so, but they can meet them there now. That's what we're doing.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Councilman Carroll.
Yes, sir. And this is my question I forgot to ask, Miss McGinnis or, or Miss Spochi, the, the million-dollar question, the cost from transitioning to the new satellites, will it go up, will it go down, or will it remain the same for the residents?
If I may, Council President, the price will remain the same. It's ten dollars for one year, twenty dollars for two.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mister President.
In Kenner, it's much cheaper here.
Hey.
Thank you. Adam, for a brief second, I saw Mister Bales on our screen. Is he still in the audience?
I believe so.
Can we recognize him just to see if we did ask, answer all his questions?
Mister Bales, if you'd like to unmute your microphone.
Mister Bales? While he's doing that, Councilman Brennan, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Council Chair. I, I just, going through the numbers that the clerk read, and I, I'm, I'm just trying to think of when the two-year break tag went into effect, and I, I know, I believe Mister Bale said the numbers decreased, and it seemed like the, the numbers dropped off a good bit, and I'm just wondering if anybody could look at that, even if it's for the next meeting, if it's irrelevant or, or relevant, to compare it to when the implementation of the two-year tag went into place, that I, I, I would imagine those numbers probably, probably impacted the, the renewal twelve months later or the following year, because people had a, a two-year break tag. Just a thought.
Councilman Brennan, I, I think that was, if, to my recollection, that was twenty sixteen it passed and was implemented in twenty seventeen?
Actually, actually, Molly, sorry.
Go ahead.
Munich Code fifteen dash thirty-four subsection G says effective January one, two thousand and eighteen, two-year certificates will be issued.
Okay. So we passed it in seventeen. Okay. Yeah. In the first year, only half of the vehicles were allowed to have a two-year tag, so that it didn't completely decimate our revenue stream for break tags for the following year, because there would have been no renewals. So that, I'm sure, affected the numbers still.
I, I didn't know if that had an impact on the numbers that Mister Bales had mentioned.
I think that it does.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Mister President. I just had, want to make a comment, then I have a question. The comment, of course, I think is, it's going to, this is going to greatly increase the accessibility for our citizens to get their break tags, which is awesome. I think that's a good thing, well-needed. It's been a long time. I, it's, it was, I guess, you know, it's something that needed, we need to catch up with. Unfortunately, this, this pandemic is, is kind of, I think spurred this, but nonetheless, whatever the reason, it's, it's a good outcome, I think. And secondly, I have a, I guess, a question, Miss, Miss McGinnis, if, I guess, if you can answer this. If, and with the way the law is, the legislation is currently put, if somebody has like a mechanic, and he's certified, can you bring your car to the mechanic, say, to get a brake job, and while you're getting your brake job, he can automatically inspect your vehicle and put the inspection sticker in for you while he's doing the brake job? Is that, can you do it without the owner even being there?
If they request that, yeah. I mean, they, you know, they have to, because they would have to produce their insurance information and everything else, but there's absolutely no reason, and that's, I think that was a lot of the thought behind using ASE-certified mechanics. And, you know, as long as they're, you know, registered as a, a satellite, yeah, I, I think that would be a great service for citizens.
Perfect. More convenient, so, oh, thank you. Thank you. Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wilmot. Adam, did we find Mister Bales?
Bob, Bob Bales, Mister Bales is unmuted. Mister Bales, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I can. Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, Mister Bales.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate y'all having the opportunity to answer these questions, and I, I had trouble logging in, so I missed the first part of your discussion. I just wanted to ask if one part of the, the couple of questions that I raised, which is, with sixty-seven thousand people in Kenner, and I guess somewhere around about thirty-four, mid-thirty thousand households, there's got to be a lot of cars out there that are not being, I don't know, there seems to be sort of a mismatch between the counts and the population, and I'm wondering if you all discussed that, and if there are ways to, you know, do some kind of comparison to records from the State Office of Motor Vehicles, and to have, that is a kind of a safety kit, that I know Chief Glazer in, in the Police Department are part of that enforcement, but I'm wondering if, you know, data is out there that we can throw records up against to do some kind of an assessment, to catch people that are not, you know, going through the break tag process? And, and if the, and I missed also the, the discussion of the, if we have a handle on what the magnitude is of people who are not going through the break tag station? Is it, are we capturing half, less than half, more than half, ten percent, ninety percent? Do, do we have an idea about what we're doing there?
I, I don't, I don't have those numbers. Miss Spochi, I.
I appreciate that. I would just, I'm sorry, Deborah.
I'm, I'm sorry, Bob. What we do know is that there was a reference in the budget numbers, I think, on one of the summaries that said fifteen hundred. That was a monthly fee, monthly number, and it was based upon six months. So when I spoke yesterday with, with the director, he said that, that fifteen thousand, I think it was fifteen thousand, four hundred and something was the number, but recognized the first year that we had two-year tags available. A lot of people got two-year tags, so now we're going to have to start looking at basically a three-year average to figure out how many we were getting. When I heard that number fifteen hundred, just like you, Bob, I'm like, we have twenty-two thousand households, and we have eight hundred cars. That's like a lot of carpooling going on, right? So there's something wrong there. So anyway, it's good, the number is, the number, the passenger car number is, was like fifteen thousand, four hundred, but this gives us an opportunity to, to do better tracking. You know, as, as we, as we move along and figure out new and better ways to track this, I think it's an excellent idea to figure out a way to figure, you know, it, ultimately, it's the, the Police Department will enforce it if you're driving around without one, but the idea that you're, that you're posing about how do we determine in a, in a proactive way if we have people, vehicles registered in the city and they're not there, and I think that's worth looking into.
Thank you.
Councilman Branigan?
The other thing that impacts the number of break tags that we issue is if, when you buy a new car, sometimes they have a break tag on it already. They, the dealerships are now putting tags on it, and it, it's not going to be a Kenner tag, just because the car's registered in Kenner, it's a state of Louisiana tag. So I know that happens. Plus, you have business owners that may have their cars that, they live in Kenner, but they register their car at their business outside of the city. So that's going to impact the numbers, too. Thank you, Council President.
Mister Bales, everybody's answering as much as we can. We appreciate the work that you've done to submit these questions. Again, if we, the council people do have your questions in print here, and again, will, is there anything else you'd like to comment on?
No, sir. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns, questions?
Stacy Alessandro has her hand raised.
Yes, ma'am.
Stacy, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi. Hi. Yes. Good afternoon. I, I just had a couple of questions. So number one, is this program a temporary program that's just going to see us through this pandemic? Or is the goal here to make this more of a, a permanent thing? And if it is gearing us towards a more permanent way of doing things, then my question would be, the mayor mentioned that, of course, we're going to lose money doing it this way if we're giving half of the fee to the outside vendors. Is there any danger that by losing this revenue, we're not going to be able to keep our own break tag station open? My concern would be for the jobs of those gentlemen. I adore all of them. I think the general consensus in the whole city is everybody really, really, really likes those guys. They do a fantastic job, and I just want to make sure that their jobs wouldn't be in jeopardy because of this. That's my only concern, so thank you.
Spochi?
If I may, Stacy, you're absolutely right. This is the department in the city for which we get the single most number of unsolicited compliments on the planet. So this is an awesome group of folks, and because this department is actually within the code department, they're going to stay in the code department, and we're going to allow them and ask them to, to get out and help us do more things with code. So I think what we're going to do is take these fabulous folks and put them in greater contact with more people, because if you get a break tag every two years, then you really only get to see them once every two years, and I think now we're actually going to have them in more contact with the public. So nobody loses a job. The, the amount we lose is less than the amount that we're expending to keep the program going. So we obviously have huge budget issues, Stacy, unrelated to this, and this, this seventy-five thousand dollar net loss is not, is not going to make a difference vis-à-vis the ability to keep the break tag station open for fleet, commercial, and taxi cabs.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mister President. And Stacy, thank you very much for answering that, asking that question. That's a fantastic question. I, I believe for, for many of our residents who are old guys like myself and lady, and older ladies and older gentlemen who've been using the city of Kenner, there's nothing like customer service, and there's nothing like the institutional knowledge that those individuals give to our constituents, because they, they are comfortable with them, they take the time to explain their support when they can support. Obviously, I've been around long enough to know that nothing is forever. Anything can change, and I'm sure if the feedback, if the information from our constituents start coming in and say, you know what, we're going to these satellites, nothing against the young people, because I have a couple of young people, they, they just don't have that learned ability yet to work with people who may be a little challenged of seeing, like myself, and other things, and hearing and all that, they just don't have it. Whereas our department, we have that. So I want to believe that this will last as long as we are being, are doing, and giving the best services to our people. The minute it does not, then we have to revisit it to be able to, to ensure that we do. Thank you, Mister President.
Any other questions, comments, remarks? All right, council members, let's take a roll call vote. Please vote on the amendment, on the ordinance as amended. Madam Clerk?
Council, Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item twelve B is summary ordinance number twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-one, and ordinance amending chapter fifteen, traffic and motor vehicles, article two, section fifteen dash eighteen of the Kenner City Code of Ordinances.
We have a motion by Councilman Brennan, second by Councilman Branigan, to approve. Comments?
Yes, sir. Please.
Councilman Branigan, Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. Quite simply, this is a reduction in the speed limit from West Loyola going west, or, pardon me, West Loyola between Vintage, between West Loyola and Grand Lake, just reducing it by five miles an hour. I've been asked that by a lot of constituents, and it's just to lower it, to kind of keep things a little more in check there, and I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Again, council members, let's vote by roll call.
Wait, wait, you got hands up.
You got hands up.
Councilman.
Carroll?
Thank you, Mister President, and thank you, Councilman, for that support. One quick question, this is from Miss Spochi. You and I had a conversation as it relates to this and as it relates to other areas around the city. If you're able to confirm or affirm to me that you addressed that, then I don't want to talk about it. We can talk about it later on today.
Actually, Mister Shriner is preparing a response to you, because it was either three or four different locations and either two or three different types of signs. So he's going to, I think the answer, I think it was four, and the answer on three or easy one is a, is a, is a challenge, but I'm going to have him actually put that together as a, as a coordinated response for you, and then we can talk about that.
Can, uh, can, once, I don't, I'm not sure if he has it put together now, but if he, if he does not, if he can put it together, give it to me, so he and I can talk about it, so we won't prolong this meeting, and then we, yes, I, I prefer to have it like that. So he and I can talk about it. So we won't prolong this meeting. And then we, yes, I'll prefer to have it like that. Thank you.
Tom, will you put that together for him, please, and reach out to him?
Yeah, I'll be do that. I'll do that.
Councilmember McKenney.
Thank you, Council President. My question, my only question is, is when does this transition, will this be happen in 17 days? Or, you know, what's the timing of it, I guess, of the transition?
Rapier.
The changes to the speed limit, again, the ordinance has to lay over the 17 days, and then they can post the notices thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Councilman Segura.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Branigan.
Yes.
Councilman Brennan.
Yes.
Councilman McKenney.
Yay.
Councilmember Wilmot.
Yay.
Councilman Carroll.
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 13A is a resolution amending, item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution amending Rule 11 and Rule 12 of the Rules of Organization, Business Order and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner.
This is a motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilman Carroll to approve. Comments?
I can open.
Councilman Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. President. All this legislation does is it makes it so any legislation that's actually submitted in the future, it shall state who submitted it. It's just that simple. All who read it should know who submitted the legislation, plain and simple. We don't need to assume who brought the legislation. It should be printed on the document itself by looking at the four corners of the document. Let's just be perfectly clear in what we do and let everybody own up to their legislation. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Segura.
Yeah, I have some concerns with this that, and and no offense to Councilman Wilmot, it's not that simple. Because what happens is 95 to 98% of every agenda items come from the city administration. That's just inherent. Council has no authority to purchase anything, so we don't have to approve any purchases or bids or anything of that nature. Those all come from the administration. That's straightforward. The other thing is, is that, as you see on this agenda, there happens to only be two items that came from a council member on the agenda, and it did have their names attached to it, which is the general rule. All councilmen generally do put their names on the bottom of legislation already. So where I have a concern, though, is the language here says that the clerk shall not accept any ordinance resolution on either the the first day of cutoff on Monday or the supplemental on a Wednesday at the cutoff time, is that I I'm, I know for myself, I don't, it won't be an issue per se, because I always put my name on it. But the administration, as as always, is is struggling and doing a lot of last-minute work to get things on the submitted to the council clerk for the cutoff. And as this is fast-moving and and going through, you know, a lot of last-minute trial and error or the city attorney's comments or whatever, I would sure hate to not allow a piece of legislation on our agenda just because it got turned in and didn't have a name on it. And like I said, with 98% of the legislation coming from the administration, it's an obvious, when you get the agenda and read the summary, to tell where it's coming from. So to to start trying to stifle legislation going on the agenda merely because it was running, you know, its timetable to get to the clerk and got to that bewitching 12 o'clock time, and it got turned in and inadvertently did not have a name attached to it, not be able to go on the agenda. I just find that diserving to the public, diserving to the city, that we stifle legislation going on an agenda in that fashion, just because it don't have a name. There's many ways to read the legislation to know who it's coming from after it's filed. So that's that's my reason for not supporting this.
Mr. Wilmot, let me ask a question. Do you foresee, on the 98% that we do receive from the administration, do you perceive the mayor's signature being and authorizing the 98% of what we're looking at?
I'm not following you. As far as the legislation is concerned, a lot of it is in blank, such as Councilman Segura has suggested. But I think it's automatic when when the administration, if they're going to, if they're going to propose legislation, I think it's automatic. I don't think there's a problem with that at all. I think it's a matter of who's going to own up to their legislation. I think everybody needs to own up to it, who it is. It's possible that some of the council persons who submit legislation, if their name is left off of it, then it looks like it's the administration.
And you foresee?
I think it's important that we actually put whoever it is, it's good government. We need to put forth on there who who submitted it, plain and simple, looking at the four corners of the legislation, who submitted it. Everybody will get used to it and do it. Do it. It's easy. I think it's going to be clear, and and I think we need to do it. It's just good government.
Do you foresee, just the one that we just talked about with Councilman Brennan, do you foresee that he wouldn't put his name on that? Because he's the one that's getting all the calls about speeding in his district. I, what I look at is, I don't know if this is really necessary at all, because if you have a good government piece that you're putting up from your district, you want to make sure your name is connected with that. So I really don't know what we're accomplishing by this, given the 2% or 3% that we're talking about. I think all the council members want to put their name on something that they can claim is good government for their in for their individual districts.
I think it's important that everybody put whoever it's from, because the reason behind that is somebody who's a novice looks at legislation. I think they need to be able to look at the four corners of the document and see who submitted it, plain and simple. That's good government, period.
And I don't know, I can't remember one for individual districts that really they don't have the name of the councilman. George, do you have something, Councilman Branigan?
Yeah, I, and I hate to put the council clerk on the spot, but have we had a lot of legislation that has gone nameless? I mean, I've been here a little over two years. Natalie?
The normal protocol is if I receive something for the supplemental agenda, then it will have submitted by on the legislation. Normal legislation that comes on Mondays or the regular deadline, it does not have a submitted by line on that.
But but have we had a lot of legislation that didn't have a person's name on it when you received it?
If it's for the normal agenda on a Monday, it does not have submitted by on it. Only for supplemental agenda do I have a submitted by line on it.
Again, the question is, I think, Madam Clerk, is do we have many or any items on Monday that are not containing a name?
On a normal basis, they do not contain a name. No.
There you go.
Councilman Branigan. Brennan, you had your name up? You had, no?
Brennan?
No, he said, no. Councilman Branigan, do you have another comment?
I mean, I I just, I know if I put a piece of legislation up, I want my name on it, but I don't. I don't think that we need to have, you know, it in place that it has to happen. I mean, I I don't know. I think that there are more important things than that. So.
Council, Councilmember McKenney, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I think that this is good legislation because I work with the administration on 12A, and I wasn't listed on the in the byline, so I was not able to, I wasn't able for motion. So I think, you know, I think that having this on there makes it clear who who to call if you have a question, what their motivation is. As an at-large councilperson, it's not clear, you know, if I put legislation, it's not obvious, because I'm all throughout the city. So I know, I understand, you know, if it's something that's district specific, it's, it's makes it clear. But I think that this is just simply adding a submitted by line. It makes it more clear. It gives a frame of reference. And it it's like, like my colleagues, it's had said, this is just good government legislation. It's just making a better communication. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, last one. Your name's going to be a 98% of these items. Do you have any comment?
Well, look, again, this is a council decision. Do I think it's necessary? Not really, because I'm going to use this for instance. The Kenner Police Department is a department like any other department. However, it's an elected chief. So my question would be, when Mike Glazer sends me something for the Kenner Police Department, as is it is right now, we assume it's from Mike Glazer, our elected chief. And Mike, I'm not just picking on you, but you're the only elected director of a department. So now, what am I going to do? I'm going to put my name, I'm going to put Glazer's name, I'm going to put Zon and Glazer. If I don't put Glazer, does the council clerk throw it out because it just says me and it's really from our elected official? I mean, look, you you're making a little confusion for the administration with this. And again, I'm not picking on a Kenner Police Department. I'm using them as one of the only examples that's coming to me that I'm thinking of when I'm sitting here. And if I do forget to put my name on something that's very relevant and needs to be done, like like Councilman Segura said, on any department, does it get thrown out? I'm a little, I guess I'm going to be a little confused. I don't know if the chief would be or not, but the chief is going to submit it to me, and I'm going to go carry the water for the Kenner Police Department like I do and I want to do, but it's it becomes an issue. So mayor, on behalf of KPD, I I don't, here's the other political part. I don't want to step on the toes of the Kenner of our elected chief. He's elected. So now, what am I putting, guys? And if I don't put the right thing, is Natalie, I'll do respect Natalie or Teresa, y'all going to throw it out? You're not going to put it on? You're making something that, like I said this earlier, something that's not broken. Are we fixing it? Or are we making it worse? Again, we'll do whatever y'all tell us to do, but I'm a little confused.
Thank you. Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Council Chair. I I just would like to make a motion that maybe we further one meeting so we could discuss this a little further and work out the possible kinks or or no kinks, just to, so we don't miss something or it just to to discuss this a little further. Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilman Brennan. Before, yes, Councilman Carroll, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before, you know, we move on, I I think to the deferring it, which is always good to do sometime to think more, I like to get Councilman Wilmot's position on the deferment, and how do you feel about that? If you don't mind expressing your concerns about that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the question, Councilman Carroll. Yeah, I I don't, I I'm not, I think we need to go forward with it. But on at the same token, we can, it's an easy fix. You can have the person who submits it, and you can also say, we can add some language in this legislation right now by putting a mere amendment, just simply saying on behalf of. You can simply do that. Administration on behalf of KPD, that's an easy fix. We can do that right now. If if that resolves everybody's issue, and I'd like, Mr. Rapier, if you make a comment on that. Can it be done right now?
Councilman Wilmot, any resolution or ordinance can be amended at any time once the discussion is open.
Is it an easy fix for you to to formulate something to that effect?
Point of order, if I can point of order.
Councilman Segura, you got your hand up?
Well, just a point of order. No offense, Mr. Wilmot, but we're discussing a deferral, not how to amend a piece of legislation that we now have a motion and second to defer.
Well, the the issue has come up, and it does relate to the motion for the deferral, whether or not we can amend it, so it's unnecessary to defer.
Then I call a question and say, let's vote on the deferral first, and if it passes, we'll talk on it later. If it doesn't, then we'll go back to talking on an amendment.
You call a question, Councilman?
He called the question.
That's more, is that, that's more than a majority vote, is that correct? Madam Clerk.
Or to call the question?
Yes.
Mr. City Attorney, I'm not sure. Do you know offhand?
Is that a two-thirds vote, Mr. Rapier?
Unmuted.
Mr. Rapier, unmuted.
I'm pulling up the council rules right now, but I don't think it's a two-thirds vote.
Councilman Carroll, while we're waiting.
Yes, and and just to be clear from my standpoint, I would like to get a a confirmant from the attorney's office. If we can add, like Councilman Wilmot said, add it to the legislation, then I would like to do that. If we can't, then obviously I'm going to defer a vote for the deferment. But if we can get it done today, I need legal to tell me if we can do that right now. If we can't, then I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rapier, you're going to have to unmute, but the pressure is on you to give us an answer.
Council President, just to update you two, you do have two residents with their hands raised on the issue.
Well, I also have Mr. Councilman Branigan with his hands raised.
Can I speak now?
Yes.
I I don't know what the rush is for to get it done today.
All right, well, we have a motion to call. I'm not hearing anything. Let's vote on the motion to call. My only question was, was it had to be more than a majority vote? I thought it did.
Well, we, let's wait for the city attorney.
It doesn't matter. Again, we may not even have a majority.
Also, public comment, Mr. President?
Mr. Wilmot, Councilman Wilmot.
At the, at the moment, you have, you have the issue of the the motion to defer, which takes precedent over anything else. I'm just trying to find the rule that deals with the issue of calling the question. Robert's rules is a two-thirds vote, but I thought that your your rules changed it to a simple majority. I'm just trying to find that rule very quickly.
I think it is a two-thirds.
Attorney, can you, can you just give me some clarification information based on my question?
Councilman Carroll, I'm sorry, what was your question?
My question was, Councilman Wilmot has indicated that he would like to amend the legislation if that is legal to do that. And I like to know, can he do that? Does that take precedence over calling the the question about the deferment?
You still have to take up the vote of the deferral before you can do anything else. No matter what, no matter what my answer is on a, again, I've answered the question, you can amend any resolution or ordinance, but you have to, you have to get past the motion to defer first.
That was, that was my question. Thank you.
And and I apologize, Councilman, I can't find the rule very quickly. The safest bet here, since I can't put my hand on the rule immediately, is to fall back to Robert's rules, which is a two-thirds majority to call the question. But your 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 debate at this point can only be on whether to to defer or not to defer. So if you want to call the question, it will take a two-thirds majority to.
Again, we have a motion by Councilman Segura to call.
Question? Point of order?
Councilman Wilmot.
Just curious, do do we allow public comment at this point or no?
Only on the issue of the furl. That is the issue in front of the council. That is the issue in front of the council at this point in time.
Do we have any comment from public at this point on the deferral, Mr. President?
We have two hands raised from the public, one hand raised from the public, man.
Mr. City Attorney, could I clarify? The vote will be to call the, whether we're calling the question, correct?
The question on ending debate on the issue of of deferral to vote on the issue of deferral.
So it'll be two votes. It's going to be.
Councilman Wilmot, by Councilman Segura.
So it will be to end debate, first vote, and your second vote would be for deferral, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So I guess my question is, is do we allow public comment at this point or or the next vote?
That's the next vote. Let's just get the motion by Councilman Segura taken care of first.
So right now, we are voting on. So right now, we are voting on calling the question to end debate on item 13A, correct?
Correct.
Ending debate on the issue of deferral, not ending debate on the entire resolution, just ending the debate on the issue of whether to defer or not to defer.
Okay, council members, Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
You didn't watch unmute.
Sorry, yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Nay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Nay.
Councilman Carroll?
Nay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Mr. City Attorney, I need seven zero?
No, you need two-thirds.
So you're two-thirds with motion is?
You need a vote of five to.
Motion fails four three, correct? Councilmembers McKenny, Wilmot, and Carroll are opposed.
Wilmot is sixty-two percent on the issue.
On the issue of calling questions.
Your debate continues only on the issue of whether to defer or not.
Thank you. Back to your discussion on the deferral.
You have two hands. I don't know if they're wanting to talk on the issue.
Yeah, if somebody in the public wants to talk on a deferral, by all means, recognize it.
Councilman Carroll had his hand up first.
I'm good, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, Adam?
Miss Stacy Alessandra?
Thank you. I do want to speak on the issue of deferral.
Address, please.
Stacy Alessandro, thirty-three oh nine Chateau Boulevard, Kenner, seven oh oh six five, District Four. I would like to speak on the motion for deferral. I am completely against this, and the reason being, this is a super simple piece of legislation, whether or not to put somebody's name on a piece of paper. Y'all have routinely voted against deferrals when Councilman Carroll and Councilman Wilmot recently brought up some very legitimate, complex issues that needed to be deferred, and y'all blanketly shut them out. It's always the same four against the same three. So y'all don't defer when they're asking for something that's really, that has been important. This is about putting a piece of paper, a name on a piece of paper. Why do you need to defer this? Why can't, why can't we do the way we used to do with these council meetings where everything wasn't predetermined before the meeting, in the agenda meetings? Why can't you hash this out in public? It's not like it's something super complex. I mean, this can be hashed out before the public, right here and right now. This is a piece of legislation dealing with transparency. It's not that difficult. Now, I would like to speak on the actual legislation when my time comes, but I think it's insane that y'all are going to defer something this small. It's a great piece of legislation, but it's very small, and y'all can't figure this out right here in front of the public? Shame on you if you can't. Please do not defer this. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, is there somebody else?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I have no real strong feelings about deferral, but I see no reason to defer. I mean, like Miss Alessandro and like Krista McKenny, it is simply good government legislation. And transparency, the other council members and the public should be entitled to know who sponsored a piece of legislation, and if you're doing it on behalf of someone else, just say sponsored by so-and-so, on behalf of so-and-so. But I see no need for a deferral, but, but, that's it.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. At the risk of being rude, sometimes some things come to light while these discussions are going on. That's the reason I'm asking for a deferral, because I'd like to get a little more information. I'd like to speak with the clerk a little more. I'd like to speak with Councilman Wilmot a little more about why he's doing this and some reasonings that I didn't have before the meeting. That's the reason I'm asking for the deferral. It is not anything against anyone. It is not anything against any preconceived notions. I would just like to get some more information so that we're not rushed to a judgment on this. That's the reason for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Brennan? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. The vote is on.
Zon's got his hand up.
Mayor?
Councilman Brennan, there was no discussion about the legislation beforehand?
Mayor, just some of the comments that were made during this presentation made me think of some other things, and that's the question.
You weren't reached out to, to discuss this legislation beforehand. I'm just, I wasn't, so I was just, I was just wondering.
Oh, now I understand what you're saying. No, I, I mean, just the only time I saw anything or had any discussion was from the agenda when it was released.
And I back, and I back you up in your comments. That's what I was asking you, because I didn't know. I back you in your comments because that, that would, there would be no need for a deferral, I think is what you're saying, is what I'm feeling, if you had been discussed with this legislation. Because I guess you, like me, I'm trying to figure out, I guess you are too, what's broken? What is not happening? There must have been an issue somewhere, because I haven't seen it. Again, this is council rules, this is council business. I totally get that. I'm just trying to figure out what happened.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing happened. This is just good government. This is just a piece of legislation I thought of, and I said, this would be good, because sometimes, as Madam Clerk had indicated, on Mondays, a lot of times, names aren't put on legislation. And this will, in fact, mandated that they have the names on the legislation. And as far as anybody else who submits legislation, they're going to have to put their names too. Again, it's the four corners of the document. This is pure, good government. That's all it is. And if we can't pass something as simple as this, I really, there's something wrong with our government in Kenner.
Councilman Segura?
Hey, look, we keep bouncing back and forth. We talk on the legislation or we talk on deferral. I thought we were on deferral. I'm only, I'm agreeing to go with the deferral because I had some solid problems with this legislation because of the way I read it, when it said, the clerk shall not accept any piece of legislation without a name on it. And I see a big problem with that when it's last minute, and we get a lot of things that are last minute because government works at a fast pace, and it sometimes works right up to the deadline, and it has to get it turned in. And just to believe that if in inadvertent time a name was not put on it, it would not get on the agenda and it could cause a problem, I don't think that's good government. So that's my objection that I wanted to put forth. I agree with the deferral to give us more time to look for a solution, but let's keep talking about it.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for disclosure, I'm not going to be supporting the deferment. And if I may use Miss Alessandro's logic as it relates to deferring or not deferring, the criteria that we're going to use, let's be consistent with it. As she said before, there have been other items brought up, in my opinion, that were some concerns about not enough information or needed to explore more, that was determined no deferral. But for this one, my opinion again, it is very miniscule as far as it relates to the information comparing others. So because of that, if we're going to use something, let's just use it. But we can't flip back and forth with it, so I will not be supporting the deferment. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Let's vote on the deferment, yay or nay, and is that a majority? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Carroll?
Nay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
This is on the roll call vote to defer.
One meeting to defer.
We still have two hands up from the public, Councilman.
We're in the middle of voting.
We're in the middle of voting, I'm sorry. Adam, you got to tell me ahead of time when we have hands.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute and it was jamming on me.
I am not, I am not going to vote to defer.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman McKenny?
Nay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Nay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Nay.
Motion to defer fails three, four. Councilmembers Carroll opposed, Hayes is opposed, McKenny's opposed, and Wilmot is opposed. Back to your original motion on your resolution.
Councilman Wilmot?
I don't know if we have public that needs to speak, but at the proper time, I'd like to do a closing.
We do. We do have two hands up still.
I defer to them to give them an opportunity to speak.
Adam, who are they?
Mr. Richard Brown is first and Stacy Alessandro is second.
All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Campo. I just want to say, to me, this is simply a piece of good government legislation. It is for transparency. I can't conceive of why we would not want to put the name of the person who sponsored the legislation on the legislation. It's, to me, it's just inconceivable that someone would not want to do that. And if you're sponsoring it on behalf of someone else, just say so. I see no problem with that. I don't think the legislation even needs to be amended to provide for that. But if you want to amend it to provide for that, you know, do so. As a member of the public, you know, when I look at the agenda, I like to see who is sponsoring it. If I have questions about it, I want to know who to call. And I have questions and get curious when there's no name attached to it. To me, it's just basic, elementary, fundamental transparency and good government. I would think that everyone would support this. And one additional comment for Mr. Rapier, I couldn't say anything because I was muted and we can't type in chat. Mr. Rapier, the council rule does provide that the vote to call the question is a majority vote under your own council rules. It is council rule twenty-nine. Under Robert's rules, it's two-thirds. Under your council rules, it's a majority vote.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Other speaker?
Miss Alessandra?
Hello, thank you. Again, Stacy Alessandro, thirty-three oh nine Chateau Boulevard, Kenner, District Four. This legislation is very, very simple. I think it's one of the more simple pieces of legislation that's come before this body. It is all in the name of transparency for the citizens, which every one of you guys has campaigned on when you ran for office, being transparent for the citizens. This is a hundred percent simply transparent government. Mr. Hayes had asked earlier, when he asked Natalie, how many pieces of legislation are submitted on the regular agenda cutoff that don't have names? I think he was probably assuming that there wasn't that many, but Natalie said none of them. They're only on the supplemental agenda, so none of these pieces of legislation are being submitted, and the public doesn't know who is submitting them. Mr. Segura's argument that it's too rushed, that the last minute, things are fast and furious. Well, from the get-go, whoever is proposing this legislation, they know they're doing it. It's not like you don't know who is going to submit it beforehand. This is something you know in the very beginning. It's not something you have to eventually figure out. And then I found it very ironic, because he was one of the ones that was pushing so hard to have the agenda cutoff meeting time shortened. And now he's suddenly worried that it's going to be too much for people to be able to put their name on the legislation they submit? Are you serious? I mean, I'm sure, I'm hoping the public is following all of this. And as far as it being confusing, if the police department wants the mayor to submit it or whatever, surely y'all can figure this out. I have so much confidence in every single person that you can figure out who is submitting this, whether you have to say it's being submitted by Mayor Zon on behalf of Chief Glazer. Figure it out. It is simply putting the name of the person submitting the legislation before the public. Why is this so hard? It's really, really frustrating, and I'm going to speak directly to you, Mr. Branigan. You're my councilman. I was very disappointed that you didn't vote to defer. I really will be super disappointed if you vote against this. It is mind-blowing that anybody would vote against this or need to defer it or anything like that. If this doesn't pass, it's strictly political gamesmanship at this point. This is not rocket science. It's just good government. And I'm real, and I'm sure, I stand upset because I'm upset. As a taxpayer, a public, a member of the public, member of Citizens for a Better Kenner, I'm really upset at the way things are happening. This is so simple, and if y'all can't pass this, then we have much bigger problems we need to delve into. And thank you for my time, for your time in allowing me to speak.
Adam, is there anybody else?
No other hands raised.
Madam, Councilman Wilmot?
I'm just waiting to close at the proper time. If other council persons want to speak, that's fine.
Councilmember McKenny?
Yes, I just want to clarify that when this legislation, or mention that when this legislation was submitted, it was submitted with the line that Councilman Wilmot submitted it. And I reached out to him to ask and talk to him about it. So, you know, that's the advantage of having this information included in there. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's take the vote. I'm sorry, I did not see your hand, Councilman Segura.
Okay.
I heard your grunt.
Well, no, it's frustrating when words are taken and twisted around to mean something that's not what they meant. I never said I didn't want the name on the legislation. I said, I routinely put my name on things that I put up and others I have seen also. So it's a little misleading, and I don't go against my council clerk, but it's not a zero legislation comes up without a name, because both Brennan and Wilmot put this up on the regular agenda and had names on it. It didn't come up through supplemental, so I'm sorry.
I said mine did. It came up on a Friday.
You use the supplemental a lot. You're right, I'm correct. I stand corrected. You use supplemental for that purpose, but Councilman Brennan had his. And I can go back and pull all sorts of legislations that are going to have other council members' name on it when it was first filed, because that is what happens a lot of the times. It's a few times that they don't, and I do agree. I'd love to see every councilman put his name on every legislation from the beginning, because I agree fully, they need to stand up and say, I'm putting it up. But let's not twist that part around to say what my contention is. It's just, I don't want to see a piece of legislation not get on the agenda because somebody inadvertently forgot to put their name on the paper when it got turned in. If there's a way to work this to say, yeah, you got to have your name on it, but it was figuring out how to do that, I'm all in favor of hundred percent names. I just don't like telling somebody, whether it's the administration or a councilman, just because it don't have a name, it don't go on the agenda. That is my only objection. I'm a hundred percent for names.
Councilman Branigan?
Every piece of legislation that I put up, I put my name on it. And I don't know how many times they have not had names on it, because even if it's submitted for Monday, my name is on it. And you can look into the body of the legislation that I put up. The only reason that I was looking to defer it was because I did not want any issues later. Since the deferral's off the table, I will be voting for this legislation.
Any other comments? Councilman Wilmot?
Yeah, I'd just like to, in my closing, I'd just like to say, this is really, really basic legislation. And as far as everybody understanding it, it's. And as far as everybody understanding it, it's like a one-liner. This shouldn't even take this kind of deliberation. But it is, and I, okay, if people got issues and they need to understand things further, I'm good with it. And let's be perfectly clear, this is really, really basic. Being that the case, I never reached out to anyone on this legislation. Didn't think it was necessary. Again, Councilwoman Christie McKenney did call me, and I appreciate the call, but like I say, it was real basic, and I didn't reach out to anyone. So let's make that clear. And secondly, and most importantly, if you file it, own it. That's all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Let's take the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilman Segura?
Yay.
What was that? I'm sorry, speak louder.
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yay.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKenney?
Yay.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,740. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from HNO Investments LLC to provide grass cutting in accordance with sealed bid number 20-6552 in an amount not to exceed $525,000 annually.
We have a motion by Councilman Branigan, seconded by Councilman Hayes to approve. Any comments?
Two hands up.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted some clarification on this legislation. If administration, somebody in administration will talk on the specifics of it and the monetary amount? Deborah?
Ms. Foshee?
Looking to see if Jimmy's on. HNO, as you saw from the presentation made by Mr. Pittfield, is the third-party grass contract provider. And we are using them as a force multiplier in connection with our own usages. And I'm sorry, the question about the amount is, I don't have it in front of me, so I would have to have somebody read that to me. But is it not clear in the legislation?
It's not to exceed 525,000.
Okay, all right, I see. So that is not a guaranteed contract, Councilman Wilmot. It has to do with how much we're spending on any given day. As you know, right now, we're within the CARES reimbursement period. Some of our outside contractors who are hired to perform services that our men and women cannot perform because they are quarantined or because of the COVID-related restriction we've placed, some of those items are reimbursable. As consequence, for this month and next month, some of the proceeds from this, some of the invoices from this particular vendor, as well as Risk Tree, and I think one other, will be, to the extent that they're COVID-related, will be submitted. So while you see that as the not-to-exceed amount, that is drawn down on by multiple departments. That is the Streets Department, the Parkways, I'm sorry, Public Works, Parkways, and Recreation, as well as Code for Code Cuts. So you have one contract citywide for four different departments, plus we may have some of that being CARES reimbursed as well.
And how much is the CARES? As far as CARES, what are we looking at? Do we know any?
Well, at this point, we know that this version of CARES, we don't know if the HEAL Act portion of it is going to go through or not, or if there's something behind that. But with respect to the reimbursement of expenses, because that's what our CARES reimbursement is right now. CARES reimbursement right now is reimbursement for expenses, unbudgeted expenses, things that you would not have paid had it but for COVID, and also people performing services that are not their normal service. So as you heard earlier, we basically took everybody, every able-bodied man, woman, and, well, I was going to say child, but that's not true, and put them in this coordinated task force so that we can focus on projects one at a time. So there are people in Recreation who are doing Public Works. There are people in Public Works who are doing General Services. There are people in General Services who are doing Recreation. So all of those folks are, and I know I'm getting a little far and wide. I apologize, Councilman, from the HNO question, but all those folks are out there performing services outside of the normal scope of their normal duty. And even with all of that, we do not have enough manpower to provide the grass cutting, the tree cutting, and the drainage management that we would normally do if we were fully staffed. So hopefully some, clearly not all, but some of the expense, at least for this month and for the month of September, we believe will be reimbursed after September. It is not known at this time. The push in Congress right now is for the amendment that will provide for the reimbursement or a partial reimbursement of lost revenues. Right now, lost revenues are not included, so we are simply looking at reimbursement for hard costs paid by the city.
So this is all new legislation, and it's arising out of COVID, being able to maintain a lot of our HNO issues with grass cutting and so forth? Is that correct?
My suspicion is, and I probably need to have Jimmy or Kenny Melvin jump in on this, but I think what you're looking at really is an increase of the amount, because previously we would not have spent that much on that outside service. HNO already had the service with the city to do the median cut citywide. And depending upon the season, you know, sometimes it's once every two weeks, once every 10 days, once every seven days. So HNO was already our contractor, but right now, we are asking them to step up. And actually, I see Mr. Pittfield staring intently into the screen.
I can answer this for you.
What I would like to do is pitch it to him, because he can actually give you greater detail if that is all right.
Please, thank you. That's, thank you for your answer, and Chad, if you will.
So it's raising the cap because we are currently using them to help us on our recreation facilities, because like I said, we're down at 40% of our employees working right now. We can't keep up with the grass that's growing around the city right now, especially with all the rain and the heat. That's the fuel that makes the grass grow. So it's raising that level because of the needs that are there because of the decreased employees, mainly in our Recreation Department. So HNO is helping us with all those recreation locations, which are normally handled by our staff. But again, we're down to 40% of our staff.
Do we know roughly how much the increase is, that this request is, to reach it five and a quarter? Do we know roughly what it was before?
I don't have it in front of me. We'd have to pull the contract.
That's probably a Mike Wetzel question, as we go round and round the Hollywood squares here. Mr. Wetzel, can you tell us what our prior contract for the HNO grass cut was, please?
You got to unmute, Mike. Mike, you have to unmute.
They're having a little technical difficulty. The power went off over at the EOC building, so I'm not sure they're all back up and running quite correctly. Mike, can you, are you functional there? No, he can't unmute.
Yes.
Deborah?
Councilman Branigan, you have your?
Deborah, when I talked to Mike earlier, I think he told me the number was like 330.
It could.
Was the contract before.
Now, Jimmy Dennis.
I'd rather him verify that.
Jimmy, Jimmy, you have something to add to?
Yes, I want to say, last year, the tally was like 335 was what the contract was. And with the added cuts that we have included with Recreation into this, is why we have bumped it up to where we're at with it now.
Thank you.
That satisfies my line of questioning. I was concerned, but it isn't the whole enchilada here. We're talking about, we're talking about an increase, it looks like, of around 185,000 is what it looks like. And during these times, and having the workforce reduced, I can understand for the need now. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm unmuted now. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened. It wouldn't let me do it. I just want to throw in, and I don't know if it was said, but anything that is COVID-related, we're going to get reimbursed from CARES. We're going to submit that to CARES. So even though the contract goes up, we're going to submit that portion to CARES for reimbursement.
Perfect. So if it goes up, in this case, it looks like the ask amount in the legislation is about 185,000. That being the case, we're still going to have the CARES claim as well, correct?
That's correct. So it's going up not to exceed. We don't know if we're going to use that, but whenever we're cutting Recreation grass, because we don't have Recreation people, that will be submitted to CARES for reimbursement.
Thank everybody for your explanation. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Wetzel, Mr. Pittfield, and Mr. Dennis. And Ms. Foshee and I spoke a little bit about this yesterday. And through our conversations, without going over all that again, she pretty much cleared it up most of the questions. One, the CARE is out of our hands. Keep our fingers crossed that through September and beyond, if we need it, that we will be able to get the support from our tax dollars for our people. The contract is at 500,000. Depending on how much we use it, will be based on that, and not to exceed that, which is good. It will include some of the legislation we talked about before, to be able to trim the trees, the crepe myrtles and all that stuff, so we can use it for that. So that is definitely helping all with the mayor and all of what we are concerned about for the city. The last thing is, in my opinion, what should go on past this, past CARE, past the money, is a schedule that I am looking for to be able to ensure that, you know, we want to get, this is a rainy season, it rains, it rains, it rains, so we are challenged by that sometime. But for my office, I want to be able to get that schedule to know. So I'm able to call and say, hey, guys, it's been over two or three weeks, based on the schedule, and to be able to say to the public, from this point forward, if there are any concerns about lots of our city properties that are not cut, please call my office from District One. And for everyone else, to call the Public Works and the, not Planning, the Jimmy Dennis's department. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Clerk here, no other comments? Let's take the vote.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,742. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Black Star Diversified Enterprises to supply signpost brackets and miscellaneous sign supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 20-6561 in an amount not to exceed $40,000 for the Department of General Services.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney to approve.
Councilmember Branigan?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yep, we have a question or a comment from Councilman Wilmot.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question's going, looking at the heading of the legislation, specifically the amount, it indicates that it's 40,000. And then you look at the bid, the bid itself, and the documentation, it indicates 229,705. If somebody can explain that to me, why is it not on our legislation, that figure?
Any comments?
I can answer that. Councilman, typically, you have a bid, and you're bidding X amount of items, and you have to have a price on every one. So quite likely, that number is going to be high. But all that's being done here is putting a cap, which is usually lower than the bid amount. It's very typical of what we do.
Okay, so Mr. Schreiner, we're just, this is authorized in 40,000 and no more. It's not the 229,000 in the bid?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that clears it up. I appreciate, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Kenny?
Unmuted.
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Seven zero. Item 15C is a resolution approving amendment number one to the engineering agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated dated March 22, 2019 regarding Loyola Drive and I-10 interchange connection to the new terminal of the New Orleans International Airport, state project number H001670, federal aid project number H001670, City of Kenner project number PW-2019-4-AR to increase the agreement amount by $115,000 for a total contract amount of $268,000 for the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Councilman Segura, seconded by Councilman Brennan to approve. Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan, you had your hand up late.
Okay. Basically, this is being reimbursed by DOTD, so it shouldn't be costing the city anything. Is that correct, Mr. Schreiner?
Yes, Councilman, that is correct.
Okay.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Brennan?
Unmuted.
The Jess?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman McKenney?
Welcome.
Yay.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yay.
Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid from Cycle Construction Company LLC, received June 24, 2020 by the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD, in the amount of $628,139.60 for South Williams Boulevard streetscaping, state project number HP, period 009804, federal aid project number H009804, Kenner Public Works project number 2019-28-MISC for the Department of Public Works. Item 16B is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid and alternate number one received from Godfrod Contracting LLC in the amount of $162,200 for the 39th Street and Powell Boulevard Sewer Lift Station, LS 4207 Upgrades Project, in accordance with sealed bid number 20-6564 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16C is an ordinance granting a construction servitude to the Department of Transportation and the development of, and development of the state of Louisiana for the state project number H, period 011670, I-10 and Loyola interchange improvement route I-10, Jefferson Parish, Louisiana. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Council Chair. I would just like to extend my thanks to all my fellow council members, Mayor Zahn, Chad Pittfield, and Ms. Lee Rousell, who helped us coordinate lunch for all the city workers this past Wednesday, and will happen again next week. Troy Janusa put out a little spread for everyone, and it was our way of saying thank you to all our city workers for everything they've done for us and for the city and for our citizens during all of this COVID experience. Again, I'd like to thank the mayor and my colleagues for all agreeing to split the cost of that, and thank the workers for everything they've done. Chad, do you have any comments on it, just to reiterate it a little bit, please? Thank you. Thank you, Council Chair.
Yeah, just real quick, Councilman, I just wanted to, you know, exactly what you said, you were thanking us, but we want to thank y'all. As I said earlier, and I showed you the presentation of what these men and women are doing on a daily basis, the little bit of thanks that we can show to help motivate them and, and keep them working. Every little bit, every little bit counts, and I appreciate that y'all recognize that and want to throw in that little bit of extra appreciation, those, that those men and ladies didn't have to worry about lunch that day. So it, you know, puts the smiles on their faces when they see that kind of stuff. It's the small gestures that go the longest ways a lot of times. So thank you to every single one of y'all for making that happen.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I'd just like to, also to follow suit, like Councilman Brennan, about thanking individuals for support. And like I said, I'm not gonna go into much detail just to answer them, but there will be forthcoming additional information. I'd like to thank Attorney Shaw, Planning Director Dufour, and the Public Works Director, Mr. Mohammed, for their support on the project for the Glen Woods Apartments in the Lincoln Manor subdivision. I think this is something with great information coming forward. And also the contractors and the Housing Authority for their support. As we move forward within this, we will be getting additional information. Because, you know, the, 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 the good thing is that I'm not an attorney like Michelle. I'm not a planning director like Mr. Dufour. I, I don't have the certifications like Mr. Mohammed and all of our stuff. But because of their ingenuity and because of their insight on this, you know, we could have taken this in a whole new direction. With their expertise, we stopped it, and we're able to go back, revisit, and it's gonna be a plus, particularly for our senior people, and we'll talk about that more. Also, I'd like to thank Representative Stagney for his support, along with the mayor and administration, about upcoming project for the Lincoln Manor subdivision for drainage. We will be hearing more about that. Thank you, guys, for that. That's fantastic. And last but not least, Mayor Zahn, Councilman Byron Lee, the Jefferson Parish Council, and Attorney Shaw, for the, and General Services, about the assessment and approach we're doing for the AP Clay Center that houses the pre-K. This is another part, that all of these people with their resources, expertise, and support will be showing an improvement. Even during the time of a pandemic, you know, we're, we're doing, we're doing something. So thanks again for everybody's support in that, and we will have forthcoming other information for the city and for the constituents. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember McKenny?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, well, first, just briefly, thank the Public Works employees and all the employees who, every day, who are still working hard for the city and, and doing the things that we need to get done to continue to move forward. But I'd also like to point out that some, several of the Jefferson Parish Youth Council members for the Key Club that I am an advisor for had joined the meeting. I wanted to welcome them. I believe, actually, they already have gone by this, just because of the length of the meeting. But I just wanted to point out that they had joined. It's a great group of young people in our communities. There's almost, there are about 70 members currently that are, they're raring to go. They want to help the community, and I'm just very excited that they're participating in these meetings and these government meetings, and that they're interested. So if any one of them are still on here, thank you for participating, and I will keep you in the loop, so you can continue to attend these meetings online. Thank you.
Councilman Wilmont?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too want to thank our city workers, and, and please note that they, they keep the train on the tracks in the City of Kennesaw. So thank you for all that y'all do. And I'm gonna take 30 seconds, I want, on a personal note. Today is mine and my wife's, my wonderful wife's 33rd anniversary, and I want to thank her for being the best part of my life. I know, I, I do know and hope that, I know she's watching right now, so, but I better say it right. So, but I, I, I love you and have a great day. Thank you. That's all I have.
Carroll, did you have your hand up, or were you clapping?
No, I was clapping and congratulating, you know, his wife for putting up with that guy, so.
Amen, amen. Councilman Branigan?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Gregory. I can't believe she put up with him for 33 years.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and a motion to reconsider or remove from a table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Adam, do we have anybody out there?
We do. Mr. Al Morello is up first. Go ahead, Al.
Ms. Morello, you got three minutes? Hello?
Morello, Friday 2/6 to East Loyola Drive, just District 48 years. I want to direct this to Councilman Segura. I read about your ordeal in the Habakkuk. Thank God, you wasn't seriously injured. Uh, next topic. I want to express my appreciation to Doug Doot for finally giving us those reported cases in Kennesaw, which has been a topic of mine, a topic of discussion for several months. So I guess it's better late than never. 2030 Plan, there are 10 major capital projects under that plan, and over the last seven years, uh, uh, we haven't gotten anything done. Some were completed, a lot of them are still not. Uh, that's not acceptable to Councilman Carroll. Uh, I too was opposed to that 2030 Plan, seven years ago, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because I thought this plan would be, would be right for the political payback and the political patronage, and it was not proven for the city of Kennesaw to be strapped with that kind of debt. I believed that then, and I believe that now. So with that said, uh, any other guy, any comments or any questions for me?
Adam, is anybody else?
Up next is Ms. Alessandro. Go ahead, Ms. Alessandro. Go ahead, Stacy.
Hi, thank you. Um, so, well, first of all, I just wanted to mention, since Al brought it up about the 2030 Plan, I was opposed to it as well, because it was so open-ended, and it didn't really have anything concrete in place. And I was stunned to hear today that we spent five, over $5 million of taxpayer money on consultants for these projects, so, um, wasn't happy about that. But anyway, I do have, I have some thanks that I want to say. I have some compliments, and then I have one question. Um, so first of all, I wanted to thank the City of Kennesaw for keeping us informed of all the COVID testing sites online. I think, I'm not sure who's responsible for posting all that, but whoever it is, you're doing a remarkable job, and I thank you. That's a very valuable service to the citizens, so thank you for that. I want to thank the city employees, from, you know, directors all the way down to the workers in the streets. The city really hasn't skipped a beat, as far as citizens, I guess, services, as far as I'm concerned. I know I've called several times for various things, called the city switchboard, and the people that answer are always very professional. They direct me to either email, or they take my name and number. So far, somebody's always gotten back to me on time. So really, everybody's doing a phenomenal job. I thank you for that. Um, I especially want to thank my councilman, although he might be a little upset with me right now for calling him out earlier. But I did want to thank George Branigan for what he does for our district. I've never had a councilman ride around the way he does after we have events in the city. You know, after this last little windstorm we had, George, you know, posted online, let his constituents know he rode his entire district, just to see if there was any damage. He really does go above and beyond. And then with these two hurricanes headed potentially our way, I just, I feel super safe with him, knowing that, you know, if anything happened, that, you know, trees were down or anything, I know that George would be right on it. So thank you, George. And my last question will be quick. With the 2030 Plan, I saw that, you know, we have some more art projects potentially being installed, like especially on West Esplanade. And I was wondering if there's a chance that we could form some type of beautification committee, maybe a representative from each district, just regarding the artwork? So maybe that citizens can have some say-so into the art that's being placed, you know, on the neutral grounds. Um, I love the art, and I'm glad we have it, and I thank Mr. Shane. I know he donated most of it, but I'd like the citizens to have some input as to what will or will not be installed. Thank you, and everybody have a great weekend.
Anybody else, Adam?
Mr. Brown?
Okay, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Stacy Alessandro stole some of my thunder. I was going to say some of the same thing she did, but just some comments. First off, I want to thank the council for adopting that change, the council rules, to require that the name of the person who submits legislation be included on the legislation. I think that is simply good, good government, good common sense, transparency, and good government. And I thank the council for adopting it, and I thank my councilman, George Branigan, for supporting it, and for the, for the others who did. Well, all, all of you did ultimately. I also very much appreciate the updates that are being posted on the city's Facebook page regularly, and also on Nextdoor.com about the coronavirus testing sites. That is very useful. I'm glad the city's doing it. Thank you to whoever does that. Also, like Stacy Alessandro and Al Morello, I was opposed to the 2030 Plan, or particularly to the way it was done. And I think it was done without a vote of the people, which, which is what bothered me the most. And the fact that the projects were not locked in, and the money could ultimately be used for any, anything. I had concerns about it, and there's nothing else to add. One final comment. Earlier, there was some discussion on a topic. I forget what, what the topic was. I think about the, the cleanup crews and the fact that the directors are getting out, working. And Chad Pittfield was talking about it, and mentioned bucket trucks. And, and I have actually seen Chad Pittfield in a bucket truck, taking down Christmas decorations. So I know he, he does, in fact, get out and get in a bucket truck himself when it's necessary. And I appreciate what all of our Kennesaw employees and directors are doing. So, so thank you. Good, I appreciate it. That's all.
Adam, anybody else?
No other hands, Councilman.
Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Adjourn.
Thank you. Y'all have a good weekend.
Thank you.